Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, June 28, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Board member Rosati will be leading us in the invocation and with the flag salute. So if everyone, well actually, I'll turn it over to board member Rosati. You go ahead.
Thank you. My invocation is going to be more of a inspirational quote. Wherever you go, no matter what the weather, always bring your own sunshine. If you want light to come into your life, you need to stand where it's shining. Success is in the sum of small efforts repeated day in and day out. Happiness is the only thing that multiplies when you share it. Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, under God, under liberty, justice, and for the good deed.
Thank you.
Thank you, board member Rosati. May I have the Madam Clerk conduct the oral call, please?
Yes. Board member Rosati?
Yes.
Board member Attakunian?
Present.
Chair Liu?
Present.
Board member Gamboa? Let the record show, board member Gamboa is absent.
Thank you. So in order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner, during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings in lieu of in-person attendance. So members of the public may participate in public comment by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements from city staff?
We do not have any announcements.
Thanks. There's one public hearing on tonight's agenda, and we will be hearing on project number 21-0001298, which is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Mendocino Farms, at 43 Riverside Drive in the MDC-2 or Media District Limited Commercial Zone. Before we begin, do any board members have any legal or other conflicts of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
I have not either. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
Other than what was included in your packet, we have not received any additional comments.
Thank you. Would the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Liu and members of the board. My name is Lucia Huang, and I am an assistant planner with the Planning Division. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed conditional use permit request for the property located at 4301 Riverside Drive. The applicant Nina Ray on behalf of Mendocino Farms is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption, a type 41 alcoholic beverage control license at a full-service restaurant. The restaurant is currently undergoing tenant improvements. There is no change of use as the previous tenant was also a restaurant. The sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption requires a CUP in the MDC-2 zone when residentially adjacent. The granting of this proposed CUP will allow the applicant to apply for a type 41 license with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. The sale of beer and wine for off-sale consumption will not be allowed under this permit. The property has two existing entitlements. Resolution number 1147 was approved in 1981 for an alcoholic CUP, and resolution number 24858 was approved in 1996 for a variance to reduce parking stall widths and a CUP to allow the applicant to serve alcohol from an existing interior bar, including a 200-square-foot outdoor patio. At the time, the property was occupied by a single-tenant restaurant, Mo's Restaurant. In 2018, a new ownership split the former Mo's Restaurant into two restaurant spaces, 4301 and 4303 Riverside Drive. The tenant at 4303 opened first. They currently operate as a restaurant with the onsite sale of alcoholic beverages under the previously granted CUP. Since the previous CUP was only for one restaurant, the second tenant, Mendocino Farms, must apply for a CUP to serve alcohol. Here is an aerial view of the project location. The restaurant is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Riverside Drive and North Rose Street. The property is 8,310 square feet, and the tenant space is 2,288 square feet. The other 3,531-square-foot tenant space is occupied by Tokaya Organica. The project site is zoned MDC-2 Media District Limited Commercial. The properties to the north of the project site are zoned MDR-4 Media District High Density Residential, which most of which are currently developed with multifamily residences. The MDR-4 parcel to the immediate north is the surface parking lot for the subject property. To the east, west, and south of the project site, the zoning is MDC-2, consisting of various commercial uses, including restaurants, offices, and retail. Further south is the Zone R1 and developed with single-family residences. U.S. Census Track number 3116, where this restaurant is located, roughly corresponds with the Media District's specific plan area. There are 27 establishments with active ABC licenses within this census tract. Mendocino Farms is shown in yellow. The majority of these licenses are type 41 or type 47, both of which are licenses for the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption. If approved, the CUP will allow for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption only at the full-service restaurant and 580-square-foot outdoor patio area. The approval of this permit will not authorize the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption. The consumption of alcohol will be allowed during business hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Last call will be 30 minutes before closure. Under this proposed permit, there will be no exterior or interior alterations made to the building to accommodate the sale of alcohol. As shown in the current slide, the area dedicated to the storage of alcohol is located within the kitchen walk-in refrigerator and beer and wine direct drawer. The kitchen area is shown in yellow. The approved plans for the restaurant show a maximum occupancy of 25 within the indoor dining room, shown in green, and 26 for the patio seating area, shown in blue. Per City Council Resolution number 24858, a variance and conditional use permit approved in 1996, the property is required to have a total of 50 parking spaces, 45 onsite and five off-site employee parking spaces. Under the tenant improvement for Mendocino Farms, the property was issued city building permits to restripe the parking in order to comply with Americans with Disabilities Act parking requirements. The onsite parking was reduced to spaces for a total of 43 spaces. The conversion of standard parking spaces into ADA spaces is allowed by the city because the ADA spaces are wider than standard parking spaces. The sale of alcohol would be an incidental use to the existing restaurant operations and therefore does not require any additional parking spaces to be provided. Staff finds that the proposed request for the sale of beer and wine at Mendocino Farms Restaurant is consistent with the character of the commercial strip on Riverside Drive. There are similar uses throughout the immediate area, and this restaurant is consistent with the existing neighborhood-scale commercial uses nearby. Staff has determined that the incidental nature of the proposed use will not cause a negative impact and is compatible with the uses allowed in the zone and in the surrounding area. If this CUP is approved, the sale of beer and wine would be incidental to the operation of a sit-down restaurant, where at least 65% of the gross sales revenue must be from food sales. Further, the conditions of approval require that there is no live entertainment or dancing at the establishment, and that amplified music can only be played indoors. Exterior speakers would not be allowed unless a CUP is approved. Therefore, staff can recommend the planning board approve a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number 210001298, allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Mendocino Farms, at 4301 Riverside Drive, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would now like to invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name's Nina Ray, and I'm representing Mendocino Farms. Good evening to everyone, and I would like to thank Lucia for her thorough job on getting this project in front of you guys today. We have reviewed all the conditions of approval, and we do not have any issues with the conditions. This just came up with my client kind of at the last minute. We are requesting the hours of operation from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., but our typical Mendocino Farms hours of operation are 11:00 to 9:00 p.m. And one of the conditions states that the last call needs to be half hour before, which means on a typical restaurant hour that would be, last call would be at 8:30 p.m. So Mendocino Farms is not a bar. It has very limited percentage of alcohol sales, and one of the things that we were trying to see was if there was any leverage on that condition of approval. Otherwise, if there's any issues, then we would not have any issues accepting that as yes. And that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer for you guys.
Thank you very much. So we will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. Phone lines are now open, but please bear with us as it may take a few minutes for
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you very much. So there being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. And does the applicant, with our representative, wish to make any further comments? You would have a maximum 10 minutes.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant? Board member Rosati?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions for staff and then maybe one for the applicant. I was reading the conditions of approval, and they looked a little different than we normally see. Just to clarify, there's no amplified music on the patio. Are there TVs allowed?
There are no proposed TVs at this time, but any amplified speaker system outdoors would require a CUP.
Okay. So I'd just like to, in the motion, I think I'm going to clarify that condition because it's a little unclear because I know it talks about live music. So, and my second question is either staff or the applicant. The parking lot is dedicated to the two businesses that were split in half. Is that correct? Is it owned by the same individual?
That is correct.
Okay. At one point, this parking lot was being subleased out, and you had to pay for parking, and anyone could park there. So I want to make sure that this parking lot is dedicated for these two businesses based on the parking requirement, and that it's not going to be subleased out and there's not going to be paid parking.
Per the, I mean, yeah, per the City Council Resolution 24858, the valet parking is supposed to be only for the two restaurants, and it is supposed to be free. And I know that the land, the owner, is the one who's operating the valet at this time. So Mendocino Farms would be working with the property owner and ensuring that it would only be for the restaurants.
Okay. And then I would like to make that a condition as well. So when we make our motion, then I'll include that in as a condition number 30. And then lastly, alcohol will be served on the patio, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board member Attakunian?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Liu. I have a question for the applicant. Ms. Ray, based on Mr. Rosati's comments, what is the status of the parking situation right now? Is it dedicated to the businesses, or is it still?
It is ours.
So it's part of your?
It is our understanding from, sorry. It is our understanding from the landlord that there's no subleases on that parking lot, and it is dedicated to the two restaurants, Mendocino Farms and Tokaya, and the valet is being operated by landlords. So that's the understanding we have with all the conversations we have heard from with the landlord.
Conversations, or is it part of the contract, the lease agreement?
They have lease agreements. Yusuf, are you on the phone? Yusuf from Mendocino Farms. I don't do the lease, but it is part of the lease agreements. Before we even filed our CUP, we had reviewed our previous conditions of approval on the previous resolution that staff has brought up to make sure that they were complying with those conditions and providing the parking and any other conditions relating to that, including valet parking and the five off-site parking that was required for the employees. And those agreements were submitted prior to issuance of the building permit. So, and I think Lucia can shed some light on that also.
Board member Attakunian, I'd just clarify, too. The condition of approval from 1996, those spaces were dedicated to Mo's. We have been working with the new property owner on these conditions of approval. And the property owner understands that those spaces are for the two restaurants, and the property owner, the current property owner, obtained a lease for the five off-site parking spaces. So the?
Okay, and I'm sure that they're also aware that if the condition is not continued, then the CUP is subject to revocation.
They're understanding if they don't follow the conditions of approval, we'll work with them to correct the action. So we've worked with them very closely on moving the two restaurants in and confirming that they understand that the previous conditions of approval do apply. And we've worked with them also in obtaining the five off-site parking spaces. So they're, they understand that, sir.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Rosati's point is a valid one because we've had projects in that neighborhood before where the neighbors really were affected by the overflow of parking, going, you know, people parking on the street, including complaints of debris and trash and so forth and so on, left behind. So it's a key point, and I think this is important for the applicant to also understand that this is a concern for the board. Not that we don't want businesses to succeed. That's not the case. We also want to protect the residents, you know, who paid a great deal of sums to live there. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
And just to add to that, we had done our due diligence before lease negotiation and had identified these conditions of approval before proceeding and working closely with landlord and city staff before filing the CUP application. So nothing like that happens, and we don't give the parking if needed. So.
I'm not advising you as the applicant, but if that condition does not continue, meaning that you do not have full access and unfeathered access to the parking as a business there, and the owner suddenly decides that he wants to earn more income, starts leasing the parking spaces out, that may jeopardize your position, your conditional use permit. So I hope everybody is on the same page on this, and I think Mr. Timeback clarified that. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good, thanks.
Okay, if there are no further questions from the board members, I will now declare this hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate.
Chair Liu, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, of course.
Just like our last board meeting, since we just have three board members present today, we will need three approval, the applicant will need three approval votes to get this entitlement.
Thank you for that reminder.
No pressure.
All right. So now we're going to deliberate, and what is the planning board's pleasure? Board member Rosati?
I would like to just clarify condition number 23 regarding amplified music, live music and TVs, that those items are not to be present on the patio, just being in consideration of the current residents nearby. So I'd like to add that to condition number 23. And then, do you want to vote on this separately, or do you want to, or do you want to listen to the second condition?
I don't have any issues with either one of your conditions that you mentioned before. So, board member Attakunian, did you have any issues? If not, then we could just?
There's no objections by the applicant as far as the two conditions. I think they're very reasonable, and it's somewhat, it's more clarifying than anything else.
Okay. And then I'm going to add condition number 30 that says that the parking lot is dedicated to the two businesses that are operating within those guidelines, and the parking's not to be subleased or farmed out for payment. So I think we need to vote on that because that's not a condition right now.
If I may, Chair Liu?
Yes.
If I may, as far as that condition, Mr. Rosati, I do agree with you. And I think we should also mention in there that by no party, that somehow the landlord doesn't coerce the tenants into subleasing the parking spaces and so forth and so on by other means. So that it's not the landlord that did it, but it's the tenants that did it. So it's kind of a workaround. So we just want to make sure that that condition is absolute and unequivocal and applies to all parties involved that's tied to that property.
Agreed.
So if we can just add by any party related to the property or having a lease or ownership in the land.
That would be my motion.
Okay. So, Mr. McMillan, my understanding is board member Rosati is making this motion with these amendments. Basically, he's taking the staff recommendation with these amendments. So we don't need to vote separately. We can just go ahead and take them together.
We don't need to vote separately, but I hate to do this to you, Board member Rosati. Could you just restate the motion one more time so it's clear?
Sure. So condition number 23 to clarify, no live music, amplified music, or speakers, or TVs on the patio, and adding condition 30 that the parking lot is dedicated to the two businesses without being leased out by either party, landlord, or tenant to a paid situation.
Okay. So, board member Rosati is making the motion for the staff's recommendation with those amendments?
I second.
Board member Attakunian, seconds. And can we have a vote, please?
Board member Rosati?
Yes.
Board member Attakunian?
Yes.
Chair Liu?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now moving to the next agenda item of reports from city staff. Are there any reports, Mr. Ramirez?
I think we need to vote on the resolution.
Yeah, I think we need to.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put it all together.
No, you need a separate motion for the resolution.
Okay.
So for me, we could redo this, but I heard take staff's recommendation, but add the two amendments that you stated on the record, Rosati. So I took that as your staff recommendation was the resolutions as presented in the staff report?
Beautiful.
Plus your two amendments. It was passed 3-0.
Attakunian, you good with that?
Yes, I'm, yes.
Just so long we're all clear. I'm good.
Yep, great.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so staff reports. Any reports, Mr. Ramirez?
No reports.
Okay. So now we have oral communications from the public. So any persons speaking during this period may address the board on any matters concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you'd like to participate, please call 818-238-3335. And the phone lines are open, but if you could bear with us, it may take a few minutes for you to get through.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. So with no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now we're going to prove the minutes from June 14th, 2020, planning board. Are there any questions, comments, and/or a motion?
I can move that, Madam Chair.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay.
You have the vote, please?
Board member Rosati?
Yes.
Board member Articunian?
Will abstain, was not present.
Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. The planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place them on a future agenda. The members of the board have any items to introduce? Nothing. Okay, moving on. City planner comments. Mr. Ramirez, do you have any comments?
Just one. Just wanted to take a moment to recognize Lucia Huang. Today is her last, well, this week will be her last week with the city. So she's moving on to bigger and better things, but we wanted to thank her publicly for all her work here as a planner over the last almost two years, right? So, thank you. So just wanted to acknowledge her. I think you've seen her a couple of times. So she started off as a technician and was now assistant planner. So, yeah, just wanted to thank her for all her hard work and do it so here in front of you. Put her on the spot as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wish you all the best.
So Mr. Ramirez, this is how it goes. You train them, and you make them strong and tough and capable, and then they leave you. All right.
Or I take credit for their hard work and then they leave me.
You said put her on the spot, and I did. Good luck, Lucia.
Take good care. All right, so we're adjournment. We are now adjourned to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, July 12th at 6:00 p.m. The public are invited to view the meeting online or on the television and will be able to provide public comment in the following two weeks by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, or by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Happy Fourth.
Thank you. Happy Independence Day to all.